And who is leading the, starting off the presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council staff. My name is Craig Kenworthy. I'm the Executive Director of the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency. I'm going to be talking to you this evening about our strategic plan and our board's plan for investing in clean air in the region. So please stop me whenever you've got questions. I'm going to give you a lot of information. I'll try to avoid using too much jargon. We try to avoid that in the office, but sometimes we slide into acronyms. And I know the public's also watching, so I'll try to be clear on that point. So I'm going to walk through a presentation with you in just a minute. So I could talk to you, I could start off talking to you about what happens with health in our region and our state from an air pollution standpoint and talk about some statistics, such as the fact that we lose more people every year in Washington State to air pollution than we do to car accidents. And that's premature deaths every year driven by air pollution across Washington State. I could also talk a little bit, I will talk a little later, about the investments we've made in the city of Renton in terms of things like helping convert vehicles in Renton, some of the investments we're making now, such as the Sound Transit locomotives, the Sounder locomotives. We have an ongoing project to grant we brought into the area from the federal government to clean up those locomotive engines. So I'll touch on that a little bit later. But I really want to talk a little bit about what's happening in the next few years and what the science is telling us about the choices we face. And this is the choice our board faces as a regional entity about what investments we want to make in public health and air quality. So as you can see, I put up here that a baby born in 2015 has a good chance of living to 2100. So what are those 85 years going to look like? Now, some people, when I give a presentation, guess that I'm going to talk about climate change right now, and I'm actually not going to talk about climate change right now. What I'm going to talk about is what the science is showing us of the health effects on fetal development of being exposed to heavy levels of air pollution, in particular for people who live near major roadways and also are exposed to heavy levels of diesel pollution. So urban air pollution negatively affects fetal growth. It's been linked to reducing newborn skull size. There was a very well-done study that tracked kids for nine years that found that mothers who were exposed to air pollution, who were already predisposed to depression, their children had worse neurodevelopment, they did not have neurotypical development, they had neurological deficits or disadvantages at nine years old. There's a long list of cardiovascular and respiratory effects that occur, and that's what people tend to think of. They tend to think of asthma attacks. A few years ago, the American Heart Association said that fine particulate matter, which is one of our major pollutants in the region, that's when you combust almost anything, you get fine particulate. And I'm going to show you a little more about that in just a minute. So that comes off of burning wood, diesel, some industrial sources, some from gasoline vehicles. It's very fine particles that are so small, they travel not just deeply into your lungs, but can actually enter your bloodstream. So the Heart Association moved from saying that that was linked to causing heart attacks and strokes to saying that causes heart attacks and strokes. So why do ear infections matter? So what the science is telling us, and this has been established for a while, is that when we have high levels of pollution, particularly particulate pollution, those fine particles in an area, kids get more ear infections. And when kids get more ear infections from the pollution, what we find is that while some people can take their kids to the doctor, get the ear infection treated with antibiotics, people who don't have as much money or don't have as good access to healthcare, sometimes will leave that untreated. Ultimately, that infection can get worse, and in some cases, it can cause hearing damage. So now we've got a deficit potentially for a lifetime for a child where the increased risk of infection came from having increased exposure to pollution. So who are we? In the 1970s, when the state and federal cleaner acts were passed, Congress and EPA gave the states the option of regulating their own air quality programs or having EPA do it. The Washington Legislature chose a hybrid. They decided to say that ecology would do the work, or that the counties could decide to have an agency, or could decide to band together to have an agency. So the same four counties, the Puget Sound Regional Council, decided to get together in the early 70s and form a regional air quality agency. And under the state statute, that said that based on the number of counties that was involved, we would be governed by elected officials from those four counties. And what the legislature said would, we'd be governed by one county official from each of the four counties, so one from King, Snohomish, Pierce, and Kitsap, and one representative of the largest city in each of those counties, so Seattle, Bremerton, Everett, and Tacoma, and also one member of the public at large that the elected officials would appoint to speak for the general public. So we implement the state and federal Clean Air Acts, which means that we have things like a regulatory role. So for example, we issue air quality permits to Boeing at all of their facilities. We issue permits to people at coffee roasters if they're significant enough size. You have both in the community here. We deal with concerns about those sources as well. We also are required under the Clean Air Act to implement things like having a monitoring network for air quality, to deal with situations where we're in violation of a federal air quality standard. I'm going to touch on that in just a little bit about how we're doing as a region, because the federal air quality standard is not just a question of public health, it's a question of competitiveness as a region. And our region actually has some advantages over places like California in regard to that, when we can stay in compliance with the federal standards. And I'll talk a little bit more about the implications of that. So what are our regional health issues from air pollution? I mentioned fine particulate. I'll talk a little bit about that in just a minute. Health-based federal limits, ozone and fine particulate. There's actually six pollutants that EPA regulates where they say, at a regional level, you cannot violate these standards for how much pollution is in the air. To give you a little bit of a sense of how we look at that, I'm going to show you, and I don't know how well it'll show up on camera, but I'm going to show you from one of, some of our air quality monitors, some of our monitoring equipment. So this is a lab blank that's gone into one of our monitors. So you can see that it's just pretty much straight-up white. It doesn't have any pollution on it yet. This is 24 hours of pollution monitored at our Lake Forest Park Monitor in King County in what's landed on, it's not a great winter day, where we're fairly close to our agency health goal, which is lower than the federal standard we're required to meet, but we're under the federal standard. So that gives you a little bit of sense of that. And then this is a day when we're violating the federal standard in Tacoma. So this is 24 hours of pollution, and that's what's going into people's lungs on those winter days when we have a stagnation event in Tacoma. So that's the fine particulate matter that I talked about.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Ken, could you pass those to us?
Sure, absolutely.
Take a look at those, get a closer look. Thank you. I said Ken, but Craig.
That's all right. My father-in-law did that for 30-some years, so I was lucky if he got that part. So I talked about that. There's six pollutants that we have to monitor for in the region. Ozone and fine particulate are the ones that we really worry about. We're well under the standard for lead, for example. Once we got lead out of gasoline and cleaned up some other things, we haven't had to worry about lead levels. And EPA is required to review those standards every five years and consider tightening those standards under the federal Clean Air Act. And there's been a lot of conversation about reviewing that again, and one of the challenges is that Congress right now is so much at loggerheads that they can't even have conversations about things like, there are certain documents we're required to submit in paper to EPA, and they'd have to change the Clean Air Act to say we could send them in electronically. And things are so polarized right now in Congress that no one's even willing to open up those kind of details in the Act. So the other things we worry about are goods movement and transportation and diesel pollution. Diesel pollution is the number-one added cancer risk from air pollution in our region, and a lot of our work is focused on reducing diesel pollution. So I touched on, and I'll talk a little bit later, but a lot of the work that we've done in the city, for example, and across the region, and the federal grants that we bring into the region are designed to get us away from older, more polluting diesel engines. So when you converted to natural gas in the city, that was work to get rid of older diesel engines, and we either want to move to things like compressed natural gas, electric hybrids, or to the newest generation of diesel engines. So for example, other work at the ports where we've cleaned up 280 port trucks was designed to get them off of 1994 engines, which are very polluting, and move them up a few generations to reduce the diesel pollution. In addition, one of the things that our board is focused on is not leaving communities behind. We actually, at a very broad level, we have two major pollution problems. I touched on that. It's fine particulate matter, and it's ozone in the summer, which I'll talk about in just a minute. As a region, at the metropolitan level, we actually have pretty good air quality compared to other major metropolitan regions. You can probably guess one of the reasons for that, or two of the reasons for that. It rains a lot, and it's windy. And so I'm the guy who's really happy in the winter if we have an inversion, if rain and wind comes in, and in the summer, if there's enough rain and wind to keep the ozone from building up, which requires sunlight. Although one friend of mine said, couldn't you just make it rain at night, and then you would get the clearing out of the pollution? So our board is very focused on, while we generally have good air quality across the region, we want all communities to have good air quality. And that's why I said, "Clean air for everyone, everywhere, all the time." That's our board's ultimate vision, is moving us in that direction as a region and not having places where people are near major road corridors be left behind, even though there are places where the air quality is very good within our region. For example, one of the things that happens in King County, we don't call as many burn bans in the winter in King County, because a lot of residents in King County have more access to natural gas for heat. Contrast that in Pierce County, where we're violating a federal standard on fine particulate, where about half the houses in the area violating the standard do not have natural gas to the house, or the work we did in Darrington up in Snohomish County, where there is no gas line, and to change out their older, more polluting stoves, our options were basically newer wood stoves, which help but are not as clean as natural gas, or propane. So we have varying levels of pollution across the region, partly in the winter, and we get those inversions because of how people are choosing to heat their homes. So the other thing that I always say is that this is not our father's air pollution problem. In some sense, when the Cleaner Act was passed in the 70s, it was a lot of industrial sources and vehicles. We still have vehicle issues, but we've required industry to spend millions and millions of dollars to clean up their pollution. So in Tacoma, where we're violating the federal standard, I've usually described it to the public as, "We won't solve this problem just by addressing wood smoke, but we can't solve it if we don't address wood smoke." Wood smoke was so much of the problem, we would never get the needed reductions just by asking industry to clean up, or requiring them to meet standards, or by things like new fuel rules for ships coming into the harbor. And obviously, the last issue, climate change. So climate change, I'm going to talk about this in just a little bit, because climate change for our region has some very interesting implications based on the climate models compared to other parts of the country. So some parts of the country, the climate models predict that we will end up with worse smog or ozone in the summer, and ozone comes from chemicals being emitted in the atmosphere, so think comes in, things coming off tailpipes. Some industrial sources, although in our region, it's not nearly that much from industrial sources, because we don't have that many stationary, very large sources that emit things like a coal-powered plant. What happens is that cooks in the atmosphere, has to have enough heat and sunlight to then reach high levels of ozone pollution or turn into smog. Ozone is O3, so it's oxygen with that extra molecule attached to it. It's a lung irritant implicated in cardiovascular events. So it's an unhealthy situation to have high ozone levels, but if you think about our weather, in the summer, we don't get that many 90-degree days in the summer here compared to California. So some of the climate change models are saying, "We're going to get hotter," and our smog levels or ozone levels may increase if we get hotter days. Some of them are also saying, "We're going to get wetter." So there's a chance in the summer, I sometimes facetiously say, that if we don't get the increased ozone, we'll be dealing with, there's going to be a marine layer in the morning, according to some of the models, we'll be dealing with seasonal affective disorder in July instead of in the winter. One of the other implications of more moisture, obviously, is additional rain, potentially more winters like this year, where we see the potential for slide events, those kind of things. Some of the models show that we will get rain on snow events in the spring, so we'll get faster melt in certain years instead of our snowpack maintaining for a longer window. There's some potential implications for agriculture in some areas where the year-round flow may lessen in the late summer. So our focus is that when we reduce air pollution, in a general way, we get climate benefits. So the transportation work we do, when we clean up gas-powered, diesel-powered vehicles, convert to electric, which is a great potential in our region because we've got hydropower, we're getting a double benefit. We're getting the immediate public health benefit for people, and we're also reducing climate emissions at the same time. So I talked about this a lot already. Six pollutants with limits, the federal smog or ozone standard that has to be reviewed by EPA. A court just told them, because they're late on this, that they have to review it and issue a final revised standard next year. Transportation is the major source. I'll show you a slide about what happens with ozone levels in the county in just a minute. And I touched on the fine particulate pollution in Tacoma, Pierce County. And King County is below that standard, in the federal standard on that front, and I'll show you that in the slide in a minute. But it's above, there are days that we're above, and areas we're above our health goal, which the science has told us and our board adopted a few years ago, that the federal standard is not protective enough of people in the region. So we don't have a mandate to meet the health goal, but we work to reduce pollution and not expose to people the levels higher than that. So what, I talked about what fine particulate is. This just gives you some sense of it. So that's a human hair up there, that's 50 to 70 microns, and fine particulate is less than 2.5 micron, so it's about 1/20th to 1/30th the size of a human hair. That's why it's so small, it can pass deeply into the bloodstream, into the lungs, and then even into the bloodstream. That's what you're seeing on the disc up there, is collection of fine particulate. This is a really busy slide, so I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on it. The general point is that the new federal standard is the dotted line for fine particulate that's to the right. The old standard is the line that's up to the left. That when they, when EPA revised the standard in 2006, King County had some areas that were bouncing around right under the standard, thanks to a number of things, including some cleaner fuel rules that went into effect at the federal level. And some of the work we've done, we've been able to pull those levels down. We're still over our health standard in some cases, but King County has avoided areas of what's called non-attainment or violating the federal standard. The reason that's important is that there are two consequences if an area violates the federal standards that I talked about. The first consequence is that businesses that emit that type of pollutant at a significant level, so in Pierce County, we're dealing with this now, GP Gypson, some of the sources, Simpson Kraft down there, they're emitting enough particulate pollution that we have to go to them and look at their pollution controls. And if they're not meeting a certain standard, we have to push them up to that standard. But if someone new wants to come in or they want to expand, we have to hold them to a much higher standard of new pollution controls. So I will just tell you, on the ozone standard, Boeing tracks this carefully. I had conversations with the State Aerospace Task Force earlier this year, when they were having a conversation about what's Boeing going to do. I happened to be with the South Carolina Air Director, my equivalent at a state level in South Carolina, on a totally unrelated meeting, and they were kind of tweaking me about how they were doing on ozone, because they have some favorable conditions there and when the competition for Boeing was going on. So Boeing watches this and has conversations with our engineers, because they recognize that going into violation of one of these standards potentially could drive up their costs. So it's a detriment to economic development, both for existing businesses that they want to expand. The simplest way I can describe this is that, without getting too much into the acronyms, when we're in compliance with the federal standard, my engineers can sit down with the business and have a conversation about costs. So if we say, "The current technology is this technology, and you should do it, and it costs $50,000 a ton of pollution to reduce it," the business can say, "Okay, this other technology costs $30,000 a ton, and it gets us 80% of the benefit. Can we use that?" And we can say, "Sure." When we violate the federal standard, the cost factor goes out the window. So if there's a technology that costs a half million dollars, or a million dollars a ton, and it's technologically feasible, we're required to make them put it in place. The reason Congress did that back in the 70s was so areas wouldn't drag their feet if they had an air pollution problem. And so that's the first consequence. The second consequence, which is much more rare and does not go into effect for a while, is eventually, an area in violation loses federal highway dollars. The first step is they get reallocated to things like building bike lanes and not lane miles. So you're reallocating to things that don't cause as much pollution. That's only happened a handful of times in parts of the country, and you really have to drag your feet. But if you're not making reasonable progress, eventually, federal highways and EPA, and they're getting more suits over this, if they don't do it, are required to step in and go, "Okay, we're going to take your highway dollars away and reassign them to somebody else."
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Craig, help me understand, as I look at your slide, and I see that, yeah, the blue line to the upper-left, right at about 65 percentile, and then the dark blue line to the right, those are, one to the left is the former federal standard, the one to the right is the current federal standard. It looks as if that's about a 50% reduction in the federal standard, although the reduction in concentrations has only gone down probably somewhere around 15%. Is that accurate?
Yes. So what happens?
Give that to me.
Yeah. So when EPA looks at a standard, and the standard they were looking at when they revised this was a 1997 standard, when they look at it, they have a scientific advisory panel that recommends what to do with the standard. So that panel came back and gave them a range of what to do with the standard, and they chose this, which actually was the highest end of the range that their scientific advisory panel gave them. So that's why the number went down so much, is that they, there was a lot of developing science on fine particulate matter and health that said, "Wow, this old standard is nowhere near protective enough." So that's why they dropped the standard down in regard to that. So it doesn't necessarily track between the pollution reductions we get and the levels in the federal standard. The federal standard is, they tell everybody across the country, "This is what you've got to meet." So if we'd been above that number, below that number, that would be the federal standards that's in place for the entire country.
But doesn't the higher federal standard, as I try to understand it, wouldn't a higher federal standard put an onus on corporate businesses to do a better job of controlling their emissions?
Yeah, I shouldn't say higher when I mean this more pollution. The higher standard is there's more pollution in the air.
Okay.
So it's a mass, I should have said this, it's a mass-based standard. So the monitor that you see, the last disc says 46 on it. That means we were at 46 on the mass-based standard, so we were over the new federal standard and under the old standard. So when I say higher, what I should say is a weaker federal standard, and this is a tighter federal standard.
Got it.
I appreciate you.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, asking that question.
Thank you.
So we have a goal of not exposing people to more than 25 micrograms. That's our health goal, based on the science. The board set that years ago. And this just shows you sort of what happens in the winter. And what you can see is that most of the time, exceeding the standard or the health goal occurs in the winter, and most of the time, that's when we have a stagnation event or an inversion in the area. We're not getting wind or rain clearing out. There's wood burning occurring in some of those communities. Pollution builds up. The years that you see the greenish bar being higher, 2012, for example, that's the forest fires by Wenatchee, where we actually got smoke drifting back into the region. EPA is allowed to exclude those from our data. It's called an extraordinary event policy. So we're allowed to say, "That was an extraordinary event. Don't count that against us on the federal standards." And they can approve that on a case-by-case basis. The way the standard works for the federal standard is, we're allowed to throw out a few high days per year. It's called a 98th percent standard. So the way I usually explain this is, if you were averaging the height of 100 people in the room, and there were a couple guys who were 7'6", at the tallest end, you'd get to throw them out, and then if the next couple people down were 6'8", you'd average everybody out to 5 feet. So we're allowed to do that. We are not held to the highest day of the year, and the federal standard is a rolling three-year average, so one year doesn't knock you out of it. It's what's going on in the last three years when they're evaluating how you're doing. We do typically, in some places every year, we lose one non-winter day to those averaging out the highest days. You may be able to guess what day it is in the summer that we have high particulate matter in a lot of our jurisdictions that's caused by an event that occurs every year in the summer, and it's the Fourth of July. For some time, from late on the Third through into the Fourth, depending on wind, we get high levels of pollution. We sometimes refer to this in the office as the patriotism competition between Bremerton, Puyallup, and the Tulalip-Marysville area because of the amount of fireworks that are going off. So sometimes it's windy enough that that clears out, and the 24-hour average isn't quite so high. So I talked about ozone. So ozone is a lung irritant that results, like I said, from a chemical reaction in the atmosphere. It's not what we call a direct pollutant. What you see on the disc there, comes in, lands on our monitoring disk, gets put in the air by combustion, fuel, diesel, woods, wood, that type of thing. Ozone builds up in our atmosphere, and so one of the things that happens in our region is that because you need enough time and sunlight and heat, and we tend to get an easterly drift, we don't get levels that violate the federal standard. And again, we're allowed to exclude a few days every year. We don't tend to get them. When you look at the green here around Seattle and Everett, we don't tend to get as high a level there, but the pollution builds up, and it tends to be in eastern King County and in eastern Pierce County. So our Enham Claw monitor is our monitor that is bouncing around right at the federal standard, the old federal standard, and it's the monitor that puts us at the greatest risk of violating the federal standard. The reason that's important is that when you violate the federal standard, EPA is required to look not just at where the air pollution is high, but what's, where's the area causing the air pollution? And the last time we violated the federal ozone standard in the 90s, they said, "Okay, you're only violating in these couple of places." But all three counties, Pierce, Snohomish, and King, their transportation and other emissions are causing this problem. They put all three counties into what's called non-attainment or violation. Those consequences I talked about earlier on economic development, potentially on transportation, were in place in all three counties. So EPA has to look at lowering the standard. We're close to the standard, depending on where they put it. And we're going to be watching that. We had a good summer last year because we didn't have that much of a summer. It wasn't hot on that many days. It's a rolling three-year average, like I said. We will see what the standard looks like. One of our critical investments from our board's perspective, and if you've seen or had a chance to look at our strategic plan, you'll see this, is the number-one goal they set for us is achieve the federal air quality standards because of the health effects and also because of the effects on our economy in the region. I touched on this earlier. If we can get Tacoma and Pierce County cleaned up, which we're making really good progress on, on them violating the fine particulate standard, and we think we can ask EPA to put them back into attainment or compliance late this year, if we can stay out of ozone non-attainment, we'll be one of the largest metropolitan areas in the country that will not be in violation of a federal standard. Now, I have to give one piece of the flip side of that. Our CMAC dollars will go down because the formula is based on how bad your air quality problems are. There will still be some CMAC money. Congestion mitigation air quality is the acronym, for those of you watching at home. We will lose some of that money, but from a competitiveness standpoint, for example, when Long Beach is competing with us on facilities, we will have that advantage, and people will be able to say, "If you come to our region, you still have to follow the pollution control laws, but you don't have to spend as much money on doing this. You can invest in some other things because our air quality is good enough." So our board's directive is, put your focus on that, get the region into compliance with those standards because of all those reasons, including the health reasons.
Mr. Chair. Craig, thank you for explaining that. And now, the CMAC dollars, you know, go away, the cleaner our air quality gets. Are there any benefits, any other benefits, aside from the, you know, making our region more attractive for other businesses to locate? Are there any federal benefits that can?
Well, you certainly secure your federal highway dollars, and you don't put those at risk, even though you lose some CMAC money. You also help the health of the people in Enham Claw, where we've got higher pollution levels. So you get, you get the benefit of doing that. And the thing about the ozone pollution is, the chemicals that produce ozone are harmful in themselves, so things like benzene coming off vehicles and other sources, it's actually called volatile organic compounds. So if you remember, you might years ago see low VOC paint. One of the reasons that was done was both to protect people painting in the home, but also because those emissions contributed to our ozone problem. So when we pull down the emissions that cause ozone, we get a regional benefit on our ozone problem, and we get a localized benefit. This is one of the reasons we inspect gas stations. Gas stations emit a fair amount of that. So we did a lot of work with the gas stations across the region. As you can probably guess, the gas stations have high turnover. So when our inspectors go out, and when I've been out with them before, and you go in there, and you go to the manual to see what kind of testing they've been doing, and they've been complying with everything, the person working there has probably been there in some cases for two months, and they may not be there six months from now when you come back in. So we've done a lot of work with them to help them with their testing protocols to make sure they're complying with those things. So from my perspective, it's the double benefit, and it also, over time, has climate benefits because we're reducing those kinds of pollutions coming from those type of vehicles and.
Not to mention our health benefits.
So I talked earlier, I touched on this a little bit, and I said this in the letter that we sent out. So in the last several years, we leveraged up $10 million in local investments, that's our per capita investments, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute, to bring in $40 million in the region in grants. I need to say, we're not going to get $40 million again in the near term because a big chunk, $15 million of that was stimulus grant money that we got in for things like cleaning chunk, $15 million of that was stimulus grant money that we got in for things like cleaning up the airport equipment and some of the projects you see here. The first directive from the legislature, several years ago for us though, was put your diesel money into school buses. Money you get on diesel should go to protecting kids, it should go to cleaning up school buses. So that was the first project across the region. We have 82 jurisdictions that we work in, in the four counties, and we have cleaned up school buses in every school district across the four counties. That was the first place we went with that work. And then we looked at things like the city of Renton Vehicles on converting to CNG, Shuttle Express, helping purchase the hybrid step vans. I talked about the sound transit locomotives, that's a benefit for us because those locomotives run in that area in Pierce County that's violating the federal standard, so we get help there. There's a federal act called the Diesel Emissions Reduction Act that was designed to help foster new technology and pilot projects to reduce diesel emissions. We have won a grant under that every single year, it's been out there, as it has shrunk from $100 million to $6 million. So we've been very successful in bringing money in to be able to do that cleanup work, we've got a really good track record in doing that. That project on the locomotives is one of those grants, it's a Diesel Emissions Reduction Act grant. And then one of our focuses across the region is the fleets in the region have a real opportunity to clean up and reduce their costs. And you've seen this in some of your municipal fleets, and what we've found is that the fleets can pencil out getting the rate return back on things like natural gas because the price differential with diesel is so significant. The challenge tends to be for medium-sized fleets or municipal fleets where the capital cost is the question upfront. Our very large fleets can bear the capital cost upfront. They can pay that money and get a three-year return on that because they're saving so much on fuel in regard to that. So, our focus has been on trying to crack the nut of how do we help those medium-sized fleets, et cetera, make the cleanup that they need to make, or how do we bring other dollars into the region? So, for example, in East Pierce County, in the Fire District, in Kitsap County, up in Oso, some of our other fire districts, one of the things we've done is we've brought grant dollars in to put auxiliary power units on their fire equipment and their aid cars to get a double benefit. One, we don't want a patient on a gurney laying there next to an idling diesel engine, and two, what they've discovered is they don't need to run their main engine. So they're recouping fuel costs pretty quickly, and that's a relatively low-cost piece of equipment. And then we obviously brought in some charging stations into Renton as well. And I want to talk about truck traffic for just a second because one of the things that happens in our region is that we've got a handful of corridors with major diesel traffic coming through, and you've got some of them here in the city. And we did a lot of work with the port trucks, I mentioned that earlier, to clean those up because what we found is that we tended to get older long-haul diesel engines being brought into the ports after they'd been worn out to some degree, and the long-haul trucks turn over. If you're running those and you get them up to 300,000 miles, a long-haul trucking fleet taking something from Minnesota out here is eventually going to change that out pretty quickly because it's wearing out. So those engines are turning over very fast compared to others, and we're getting to the newest generation of diesel engines, which is much more cleaner under EPA rules. Where we tend to lag is regional fleets and the port trucks, and then locomotives and maritime, because if you have much experience with those engines, those last a long, long time. And the way the EPA standards are set up, you can rebuild them without having to buy a new one. So we've got engines that could last 40 or 50 years. So, the question that I talk to a lot of groups about when I'm talking to groups about environmental justice issues and not leaving communities behind is that the challenge in our region is not so much just fence line issues that you see in another area. So I've got a fellow air director in California, he's got a chrome plating plant next to an elementary school, right? Not a good situation. We have not just site issues, we've got system issues. The way we move our goods around in the region, the way we ship our goods out of the region, about 40% of goods coming into the ports stay here, about 60% go out of the region, is causing health implications for people. So we need to look at those systems as a whole.
Excuse me?
Yes.
How much more time, because we're starting to run out?
Okay, so I'll speed up, and then, so, our board's strategic plan goals, we sent a copy of the plan out. The goals for the strategic plan are the whole region meets those federal standards, that we reduce diesel pollution in highly impacted areas, we reduce wood smoke exposure in those areas that have high levels of wood smoke, we better characterize air quality in a finer scale in more communities, and what we're trying to do there is we have a network of monitors, EPA mandates us to use, but we also have a lot of questions from the public about what's the air quality closer to me? The technology cost on that is coming down, and people are starting to buy their own personal air quality monitors. One of our challenges is staying ahead on that and working with them to make sure it's good data, but also it's a great opportunity for citizen engagement. They actually want to help gather data, and that's one of the critical things we're trying to do. I mentioned reducing inequities, and then also the board said be the most climate-friendly region in the country. For us, that's transportation work, we're not doing building energy and those kind of things because transportation work is right in our wheelhouse in what we do. So, now I come to the letter we sent to you about our board potentially increasing the per capita rate. And the question our board faces is what investment to make in these public health issues across the region? And what choice they want to make about what investment to make in terms of protecting public health and being the most climate-friendly region in the country? What I want to emphasize is that the things I talked about on fetal development and public health are an investment in public health right now, they're an investment in avoiding those premature deaths, but they're also a choice about avoiding some of those impacts on future generations. And the climate change work we do is a choice about those impacts on future generations. So, what our board wants to do is invest an additional million dollars a year across the region from local funding that leverages up to the other things, that does all the things I said on the prior slide. That's the reason we're asking, the agency's asking for the rate increase, that's the reason the board is proposing the rate increase, is to make those investments. I am taking feedback back from our 82 different jurisdictions. As you might guess, I'm getting a range of feedback. There are some jurisdictions who have said that they're okay with the increase, it's a very high percentage, but they understand it's a regional investment. There are some jurisdictions who've said this is a high percentage increase, we'd like to see you break it up into steps. There are some jurisdictions who are suffering very much financially and have serious concerns. Some of those jurisdictions are ones where through no fault of their own they're suffering, and some of them are ones where some choices they've made are not working out very well. So, I'm taking all that feedback back to our board, our board's discussing the issue on May 22nd, so let me stop there in the interest of time and see either what questions you've got. Just, the last thing I want to say is we're funded basically three different ways. We're funded by the fees businesses pay for their permitting, we're funded by state and federal grants, so we have 21 different grants that we've gotten in right now at the federal level, non-recurring grants. We have a core grant from EPA that is projected to decline over the next few years because they're going to reallocate money to more highly populated regions, and then we're funded by the per capita, which is the rate that we're proposing to raise. What the legislature said in the 70s to our boards was the per capita rate's designed to do work that's not funded by the state and federal government. I need to acknowledge that when that happened in the 70s, EPA had promised that they would pay for everything, and you're all familiar with those kind of situations. That never came to pass, and the board has had the choice of what to do about those investments over the last 40 years. They held the rate flat for the last five years in recognition of what was going on in the economy. While they were doing that, we spent several million dollars helping Pierce County clean up their problem. So if we'd not had that non-attainment or violating situation in Pierce County, I would not be here asking for this kind of an increase. The reality was we had a regional choice to make about helping them clean that up, but that's also another reason we try to avoid violating the federal standards because it's not just the business effect, it becomes very expensive for the region to clean those situations up.
Thank you. People can, council members can email you their questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, so with that, we'll thank you for being here, and we'll go on to our next topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council President, Council Members. I'm Terry Higashiyama, Community Services Administrator. Tonight, we're here to talk to you and bring you up to date on some new things occurring as we're dealing with removal of temporary shelters within public spaces in the city. With me tonight is Kelly Beamer-Parksen, Golf Course Director, Chief Kevin Milosevic, and Mark Barber, our City Attorney, excuse me, and Karen Burgzwick, our Human Services Manager. We wanted to start tonight by going through, just maybe a little bit of a recap of the presentation we did in February. If you remember, we were here and we had a panel to go through all of the things we are currently doing for homelessness in Renton, which is pretty impressive with the partnerships. I do want to personally thank the mayor and the council for the dollars that have helped support our human service agencies and our partners to continue to eradicate homelessness, which would be wonderful if we didn't have to continue on this path, but we realize that life, life happens, and that therefore we want to make sure we're using all of our resources and looking for all the opportunities to make life a better place for some of our community members. So we're going to go through that, and then at the end, we'll just give a wrap-up of where the next steps are. And I think you will find that there's lots of good things going on, lots of good communication going on, but most of all, a lot of good community caring going on, so we'll start with Karen Burgzwick.
Good evening. I'm here to briefly go over what the city does in the area of homelessness, and then back in February, I presented a matrix of services that we provide to the homeless in the community, and I believe that matrix is part of your packet tonight as well. So I'm not going to go over that in great detail since I did that, but I'm going to hit a couple of things that have changed since, and some highlights. The city of Renton currently allocates $139,483 to programs that prevent homelessness, serve the homeless, and house them. That's 27% of the human services funding that I'm given to allocate.
I'm sorry, Karen, can you repeat the percentage again?
It's 27% of the total human services funding.
Thank you.
Is going towards homelessness. Maggie Breen is the Executive Director of Renton Economic Association of Churches, she's actually here tonight, and she's going to be doing a short presentation on the Renton Meal Coalition to you at the May 11 meeting. So, we, the city, continue to work a lot with Reach on their work with the homeless by helping them to market their need for volunteers, donations, and food. And an example of that is Council President Pearson got access to some food a couple weeks ago, and what we were able to do is store it in the Center of Hope and then basically divvy it up. The breakfast items went to Hermon Bay for the warm-up program, the dinner items went to the Renton Meal Coalition to help offset their food costs, and the desserts are keeping for the Center of Hope celebration that they're having in June. And so it was just a way of maximizing resources very efficiently, and that's the vision behind the Renton Meal Coalition that we're continuing to work on. Meg and I are also meeting with the manager of the City Soil Farm that's run by Seattle U at the sewage treatment plant here in Renton, and they're very interested how the homeless can work at the farm, and also how the homeless can benefit from getting some of the excess produce as well. So we continue to work with Reach in a number of ways to expand their food, which in turn serve the vulnerable and the homeless. We're also celebrating the first anniversary of the Reach Center of Hope in June, and that's really exciting. There's going to be a special celebration on June 16 at 5:00, that will be coming up, you haven't gotten that invitation yet. And Linda's going to be making a presentation at Council that evening. We continue to support this program by providing in-kind services such as the Dollar of Your Lease for three years that you agreed to, and we help them with printing materials and helping get the word out about their program both locally and regionally. Valley Cities has also opened up an office in Renton, and they've been great partners. They're partnering with Reach on doing street outlet, street outreach to the homeless, and they've been very involved. Elena Goodman is their local manager, and she's been going to a lot of service groups and trying to get the word out. They will see anyone there, if they show up in the morning, they're guaranteed an appointment that day, which is pretty amazing. The mobile medical van continues to go to the community supper twice a month, and the city actually funds the dental services that are attached to that mobile medical van. That's a highly utilized and very busy mobile clinic. We're working really hard to get resources and referrals to the homeless that want help. That's not what we're here about tonight. I think we have great partnerships in place to help those that want help. Is there room for improvement? Definitely. As I said in February, we're working on new models for Arise, we worked on folding free programs into the Renton Meal Coalition. There's always room for improvement, but I think the partnership is there, and we have a great vision of where we're going in the future. This is more about those that are on camps, on city property, that are trespassing and are not the typical homeless person that wants help. Typically, these do not, are not the ones that want help, and that's what they'll be talking about. Do you have any questions for me about community resources or what we're doing with the homeless?
Thank you, Karen. This is quite a, for the public, this is an exhausting list. It's eight pages long of what the city and its partners are doing for the homeless. And it's an amazing piece of cooperation with a lot of people, and the city would obviously like, everybody else would like to do more, but we're most likely doing more than a lot of cities do when you look at it per capita, so, thank you. And with that, it's back to Kelly, I think, or Terry, or...
Next will be the City Attorney, Mark Barber.
Ooh, we have to have the attorney first. Uh-oh. This is scary.
Well, actually, I've got what I think to report is some good news. Many of the issues that have come up with the homeless, particularly with temporary shelters and camps, deals with their personal property and possessions, what to do with it. It is interesting that in our society, there is a true dichotomy that occurs where sometimes people think that the possessions and personal property of homeless people is just garbage, and of course, that's not necessarily true. It is a serious problem with temporary shelters, but a lot of times, people that find themselves homeless and that are in those shelters, it isn't always everything that they own that is garbage. In recent years, there's been a considerable amount of court cases that has arisen generally in the state of California in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. And probably the key case that came out of the city of Los Angeles was Lavin versus City of LA. And there, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, for the first time, kind of dealt with this issue, what kind of constitutional rights do homeless people have? And essentially, what the court did is they came down very strongly on the fact and stated that the government may not take property like a thief in the night, rather it must announce its intentions and give the property owner a chance to argue against the taking. Now, this is in the context of people who are homeless, who are probably occupying temporary shelters on public property, and so a lot of people initially think, well, gee, you know, they shouldn't be there to begin with. Well, that's a separate issue from what their personal property may be, and the court recognized that. And so it established the fact that any governmental entity can't just come along and take people's property, because sometimes people are there because of mental illness, sometimes it's because of distressed family situations, divorces, bankruptcies, health issues, a lot of different things can cause it. And so the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, they spoke very strongly when they said we reject Los Angeles's suggestion that we create an exception to the requirements of due process for the belongings of homeless persons. Why would we treat homeless people any differently than anyone else when it comes to their personal possessions? Eyeglasses, family bibles, medical records, prescriptions, bicycles, whatever it might be? And basically, the Ninth Circuit basically reached the decision that the city of Los Angeles couldn't just confiscate and seize this property and then they haul it to the landfill. And in essence, the court rejected that Los Angeles could ask them to basically declare that the unattended property of homeless persons is uniquely beyond the reach of the Constitution. Now, probably about nine, 10 months ago, we started looking at this issue because we had no policy here in Renton for how to deal with this situation. And I will confess that I myself did not really understand the nature of the problem and its extent on temporary shelters and homeless campsites. And in this process, I learned that it's much more of a significant problem than even what I had thought. In any event, the idea was to try to bring the city of Renton into compliance with the jurisprudence that's coming out of California, particularly out of the cities of Fresno, Sacramento, as well as Los Angeles. And so what we tried to do was to get together a group, which we did, in community services and parks, as well as dealing with the police and trying to analyze what would we do, what should we do to make sure that people who are homeless at least have procedural due process when the situation arises where we have to go in and we have to deal with the fact that they're occupying public property, and we have to ask them to leave. And so, in looking at this situation, it soon became apparent that not very many cities regionally in King County had dealt with this issue. They just haven't dealt with it at all. In fact, I think some of them were basically doing what has been found to be unconstitutional in California. They were simply going in and basically asking the tenants to leave of those temporary shelters, and then grabbing their property and either confiscating it or hauling it off to a landfill. This is not to say that some of what might be deemed to be property isn't just refuse and trash, because a lot of times it is. The picture on the screen is an indication that some of it is just exactly that. So it's a complex problem. But what we tried to do was to craft a policy, and in the middle of November last year, we came up with City of Renton Policy 1000-01. And in the adoption of the policy, we expressly state that the city of Renton is expressing its intention to balance the needs and rights of all of its citizens, including residents of temporary shelters, and to recognize the constitutional rights of all of its citizens to their attended or unattended personal property or possessions, whether or not left on public land. In essence, what we have done through this policy is to state publicly that homeless persons have the same constitutional rights as other persons in our society. Now, with regard to the case law coming out of California, have we done something magnanimous or generous on our part by adopting such policy? And the answer is no. We've done what is within the city of Renton's own best interest, and that's because in Sacramento, they didn't do that. And there, the attorneys representing homeless people certified it as a class action, requested that the court, in the District Court for California, awarded $1.8 million in attorney's fees, and they were fortunate in that city of Sacramento managed to squeeze out of courts... And they were fortunate in that city of Sacramento managed to squeeze out of court with only an award for $783,000 against them for the attorney's fees for violations of the civil rights of homeless people. Instead, what we did is we tried to model our policy after the city of Fresno's Administrative Order Number 6-23. The U.S. District Court for the Eastern District of California found that Fresno's Administrative Order basically provided procedural due process protections for homeless persons and their possessions, and, and found that it was an appropriate means of expressing that municipality's intent to protect homeless people's constitutional rights. Now, they had other problems in Fresno, though, and that's that it's one thing to have a policy, it's another thing to follow it. And there were difficulties in Fresno in that they were not always following the written policy. But here, we tried to craft a policy that followed not only Fresno, but also the fact that we realized that the, it would take everyone, you know, interdepartmental cooperation to make sure that this was actually followed. In our policy, basically, what we've done is about five things. One is that unattended or unabandoned property of persons occupying temporary shelters or campsites shall not be removed until at least two days after posting a notice either on the temporary shelter or campsite, or upon a stake within 50 feet of any temporary shelter. Secondly, the notice has to be done and stated in a manner, and we have an exhibit that's attached as part of our policy as to how that notice should be crafted and written, so that it gives a reasonable notice, that is calculated to provide an effective notice to these homeless people that there's going to be an effort to remove the temporary shelter or campsite. The third thing is, is that the city of Renton has stated in its part of its policy that it shall not destroy any unattended or unabandoned personal property, which appears to be the property of a person. So, if we're going to make a decision, a value judgment, we're going to make it in favor of that individual person's property. They don't have a home, they shouldn't have to lose their personal property as well. If there's a doubt whether or not the property is garbage or trash, or valuable personal property, then we're going to resolve the issue in favor of the conclusion that the property is valuable, and it shall not be disposed of as garbage. But it shall be secured and placed in the custody of the police chief or his designee. The fact of the matter is that current state law requires that property like this that's, you know, either abandoned, or can't determine if it has been abandoned, or if it's found, it has to be turned over into the custody of the police chief. State law requires that right now. And the fact of the matter is, is that that's what the system is going to, always has required, and we're just simply adopting and stating out loud, this is what we're going to do. We're going to follow the law. And then, the fifth thing is, is that that property may be claimed by the person. And if it's not claimed, then it will be disposed of, but again, in accordance with state law. So, we've covered the five principal basis for what needs to be done. All of this is done as part of Policy 1000-01. The most important part about it is the fact that it does provide for procedural due process. You can understand that without this, that basically how so many municipalities in California got themselves in hot water was because they were violating the Fourth Amendment against illegal seizures, and the Fourteenth Amendment as well. And that's what the courts and the Ninth Circuit have held, and that's what our policy is meant to circumvent. Of course, this raises some interesting issues that other members of the committee are going to be addressing, and that is, for example, you know, budget issues because it costs money to be able to go in and properly follow the law in removing these temporary shelters from public property. And to take that personal property that may be acquired and to inventory it and to put it into the custody of the police, and to then give the proper notice through social service agencies, so that people know that they can call a phone number, they know where they can go, be able to get their property back if need be. Not everything is going to be deemed to be personal property. For example, we have addressed in our policy something that's very commonly found in these types of sorts of temporary camps and shelters, and that's wood pallets. Wood pallets will be recycled. And we've also have other exceptions for things that are contaminated by bacteria or other types of problems that render it an unhealthy situation. It'll be treated as garbage or trash. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, well, a couple. I like the fact that there's a process, and I'm wondering, you mentioned that you would be contacting some of the social service agencies to explain this process, so that if they come in contact with individuals, is that the idea?
That was one of the things, and other panels are going to talk about that probably in greater length. But we knew that in order for people to know where they needed to-
Right.
-or who they had to contact to be able to get their property back, that we had to be able to work with those social, social service, service agencies in this locale. We had to.
The other thing is, I wonder, this is all printed in English, and I wonder if there should be, um, other variations, other versions that should be done in other languages, because I would assume that a lot of our homeless are not all English speakers, so I, and Terry's not on your head back there, that, that'll be taken care of, so I knew that that would be the case. Um, I mean, do you have any idea of, I'm just thinking of the, picking up the materials and the storage, how many sites we might have, how many individuals would be-
Yes, actually, we'll be addressing that in the-
In the next, okay.
-next portion of that, so we can-
All right.
-touch base on that.
All right, great. Thank you, then.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Taylor. One of the things that I, I think about is that, and I know that there was a previous comment made about homeless people who don't want help. I think about, and I know some of these homeless people that are out there in various different places, I know them by name. And many of them have mental illness issues. So, that type of a person, you know, probably wouldn't understand how to process a notice like this, the information, to be able to retrieve their belongings. Have we thought about a remedy for that scenario?
If I could briefly address that, too, prior to us getting into kind of our review of procedures, our team, Karen Burgsvik, obviously very high part of that, with the other agencies, we do go out and address, Karen's actually accompanied us at several times with individuals that have mental instability and trying to touch base with them at that, at that point. But at some point, if they absolutely refuse, then any type of help, no matter how we explain it to them, then we still need to follow our process, and we also go through with, with law enforcement at that point as well, because of their safety as well as the public's safety.
I think that's something we want to emphasize for the public. We, this is a balance. Try to balance the rights, responsibilities, and safety of all the residents of our community, those who are homeless, as well as those other members of our community who have homes. And there are safety issues that are involved with leaving, and we'll get, we'll get to that in a minute, with leaving some of this, these materials out that clearly are, fall into the category of trash, and in some cases can become a risk to the public by leaving them out there. So, this is a balance. We are trying our best to, to meet that balance and be respectful of the property rights of those individuals who are homeless, as well as protect the safety of the rest of the residents of the city.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And I appreciate that. Thank you for that explanation. And I appreciate that we are being mindful, and we obviously have put some time and effort and research into learning what California is doing as a model. I'm sure there's some other models locally here, just right next door, perhaps in Seattle, in terms of how they treat the same problem. But again, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm curious to know, have we thought in a, a way of trying to figure out, how can we create opportunity for people that, that are just incapable of helping themselves? They're incapable of, and, and, and these people, you know, what, what's going to happen to them? What's going to happen to a person? I, I can name people who I know where they live, and-
Right.
-and, and, and these people-
If I could, Councilman Taylor, why don't-
-mental illness issues.
If you'd allow us, because you're right, we know those same people, because we're out there as often as you are, I'm sure. Why don't we finish the material we have, and then we can pick it up and question? I'm concerned that we will run out of time before we have a chance to, to continue to provide the full Council all the information.
Before, before we start, I just wanted to make one comment to everybody. From my experience, the police in the city want to return this property. They don't want it in the property room. They don't want to go through the process of following the RCW. So, it's really, if, I know the people down there, and I know that how hard they try to get people their property back, because it's, you know, it's the right thing, not only because it's the right thing to do, but it's, it's the good thing for the city. We get rid of the property, we're enlarging our evidence room down there now, and part of the reasons is, you got to have this turnover, and, and so, I know those guys down there have gone way out of their way and even taken property to people to have them sign it so that they can get it. So, there is a real effort not to keep it, but to give it back to the rightful owner.
And to be clear, I'm not speaking about an effort not to be made to get property back. What I'm thinking about is the effort that we're putting into crafting this policy to, to, to take these actions. I'm thinking about, what kind of efforts are we thinking about to try to come up with some long-term plans in addition to what we're already doing to solve some of these homeless problems that we have, and particularly with people that have mental illness issues?
I think that probably you'll hear that further-
Kelly?
-in the presentation. But the, one thing I did want to make sure was understood clearly was that the policy is really directed toward temporary shelters and campsites on public property, as opposed to private property. With regard to private property, which does occur within Renton, where, you know, campsites, temporary campsites occur, that still remains the responsibility of the property owner. They have to deal with that issue, and that would be a code enforcement issue. So, it's a little bit different. This was limited to dealing with those situations where we're dealing with, you know, wetlands, natural resource areas, public parks, public property, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, if I could continue through our procedural portion of this, and to address some of the comments, as Jay mentioned, it is a balance. Our staff, park staff, as well as police staff that are in the field every day, are very aware of some of the people that do have the mental issues, and we make every effort when we go out to these areas to give them the information, to bring out people such as Karen, or the Sound Mental Health people that we've done in the past, counselors, because we know that they have those issues, to try to help address that in the beginning before we go through this process. So, it is something that we're very sensitive to. What this policy procedure takes care of is the process and how we get rid of, what you're seeing on the screen is the few people, like Karen mentioned, it's not all of the homeless that do this. There's just a few that leave our environment, some of our soft surface trail areas, some of our green space areas, you know, as well as, you're familiar with a lot of the areas, and we'll go through some of that in the presentation, to make sure that they are safe, but also that the public feels safe. And so, we, we're not going out looking for them every single day. This is not, not what we're trying to do. We're trying to make sure, again, that we, the public's safety and health is being thought of, as well as the homeless people as well. So, we'll move through the presentation. I wanted to address the areas that we clean up over the past couple of years. Now, these areas that we're showing are not areas that we have addressed all in one year. These are just some of the sites that we end up finding throughout this, actually several years. So, this is off of Oaksdale. The yellow X's are areas that we have cleaned up or that we have noticed activity. The Black River area, again, several sites there, and as you're noticing, it's definitely in the wooded, natural areas that are away from, but they are near soft surface trails. This is what we call, this is along the Cedar River Trail, we call the Narco Hill area, Royal Hills, and then the Golf Course. This is definitely one of the higher campsite areas, because it's fairly dense and pretty difficult to get up into some of the areas. Again, the Devil's Elbow, May Creek area, Honey Creek, up, if you access through the power lines off of Jefferson Avenue, definitely some camps in that area. And then, again, these are more of, the Parks crews picking up garbage on an every-other-day type basis, just on a, not necessarily encampments, but there are some encampments that we have found under the library and under Hauser on a semi-regular basis. So, if I could go back to that first. Our procedure is, if we have been notified by, whether it's another staff person, if it's the public that's concerned, they're seeing extra garbage in certain areas that maybe they hike and like to walk and recreate, we'll go take a look at it at a distance. We take the police with us every single time we go to post any camp, and that's obviously for our safety. And as we start going through the process, then the police can see what is at those sites, whether or not there's valuables, or if it fits the garbage refuse definition that's in the policy. We at that time post, and you have the packet that's actually posted at the sites where it does describe where it, where it is, what time we've posted, contact numbers that they're able to contact, park rules and regulations, as well as the Valley Cities, helpful flyers and, and numbers that if they wish to contact for some type of help through that as well, that they have that option. I will say that the 48 hours, that's the requirement of the policy, is definitely on the lean end of what we do. Typically, it's seven days, seven to 10 days before we go back in with, again, with the police and with the certified contractor to come in and clean up those areas. The areas that we've cleaned up in the last two years have not had any valuables that, as defined through our policy, they are, it is garbage refuse, and as you noticed on that one slide, that's a typical site. That's what they look like. A lot of times, the individuals will leave and move on to another site, and that's what they leave there. So, they take their, what they deem as their valuables, and we remove the garbage that's at the site. Again, we bring police in because they are the stewards of what valuables look like and know what needs to be put into evidence or not evidence. So, that's, that's our front-end brief policy, and then they come in, or procedure, and then, like I said, we'll have the contractor come in with us and the police on site, and we'll be cleaning up that area. This spreadsheet here, might be a little difficult to read on there, but I did include that on, in your packets as well. This shows the sites that we just showed, as far as where the typical encampments have been, the number of staff that will go out to those sites, whether it's the initial posting, or when we come back in to do the actual cleanup. So, the hours have been averaged, so the, the sheet wasn't like five pages of how many times we go out there and who actually goes out there, but it's, the hours and staff number have been averaged, and you can see the costs at the end, the number of staff hours as well. This does not include, as it notes in the yellow, doesn't, does not include the daily staff time that Parks will go out and clean up some of the underbridge areas that's, that are typically just left, you know, garbage and food from the, the night before. 2012, you can see the costs that were spent just on the contractor's side. 2013, the costs that were spent on the contractor's side as well. And with that, I will turn it over to Chief Malasovich.
I know the, the due process involved in this, in the 48-hour posting requirement, is for the most part the reason we're not finding items of value, because the homeless move on, and they take what they deem valuable. Our officers will, you know, will go through the site, and if they do find something that is of value, then it will be stored in our evidence room, and we'll take care of it just like we do any other lost or, or found property and package it. You know, if it's wet, it'll be packaged in paper and, and stored somewhere where it You know, if it's wet, it'll be packaged in paper and stored somewhere where it can dry out. And then our property room deal with lost and found property every day. You know, officers on the street respond to lost property all over the city, and so we, we have our own internal policies when it comes to how we release property, what requirements there are to, for owners to identify property. And obviously, the more valuable the property, the higher the standards are to, you know, identify whose that property belongs to, because it's, it's our goal each year to release more property than we take in. We've been pretty successful over the last couple of years, because if we don't do that, we run out of space downstairs. And so they work really hard, we have two evidence technicians that do it this every day, everything from releasing the cars, to releasing evidence involved in crimes or found property. And so they're very skilled at what they do. We have all our paperwork, the same paperwork we use today for found property, it's the same paperwork we use regarding this property here, how we get it back to the owner and how we have to document it.
We actually also, with that, if and when we do actually have valuable property that the police will have to store in evidence, then we will coordinate with Karen and agencies to notify all of them, besides what's on the actual posting, but to notify them that there is personal property out and where that's been located. So we'll definitely coordinate with Karen, like I said, and the agencies on that, when and if that comes up.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Chief, how often do we have homeless people who actually come and, come back and claim their property?
We've never had any items that were left at the camp, so it's not been an issue to date.
Right.
So all of the cleanup that we've done historically had no items of value?
That's correct. That's been- Because when we posted, by the time they cleaned it up, there's been nothing that, it's just been mostly the garbage. So we have not had anyone come back and, or any items that we felt were redeemable.
Typically, the sites are abandoned by the time they get there. They've moved on, and what's just left behind is just garbage.
Yes, that's what was stated earlier, definitely through the times we've done that, like Kevin said, they're either have moved on or it is, it is garbage and has been, either waste has been, there're bacteria, things like that, that fit the, where we would not want to store that in evidence safely.
Let me, let me just point out, although this policy is new, we've been cleaning and working with our homeless people for a lot of years, a lot of years. And there's a lot of expertise and there's a lot of partnerships here to make this successful for those that are in need. So Maggie Breen had to leave, but she wanted to make sure that we reminded you that that's Reach's job. We are not mental health counselors as staff, and that's why we partner and we work with Sound Cities and Valley Cities, and we work with the Reach, and so that all those are there. We actually met with some of our homeless men that came in and met with us when we were working through this policy, to talk to them about what can we work with and how does this work for you. So this is not something we arbitrarily do. I wanted to be very careful that you understand how respectful we are for this process, but I also want to say, this is about public space, and it is about a combination and a balance here of people's rights to use their parks and trails in a safe manner. So I do want to say that, well, we really appreciate the guidance and the support from the public. We do not want them to go up into the camps. That's not the right thing to do. So we've listed the numbers up here. There is a general information number, a non-emergency number, which is new, the 425-235-2121. That's a non-emergency. Hey, I think there may be a camp here, or I think there, you know, I saw some people, I just wanted to call that in. Or you can call the police front counter, which is 425-430-7500. That again gets you to a person that can answer questions. But definitely, if you have any sense that it's a situation that feels unsafe, please call 911. We'd want you to do that in any park, any circumstance, and so that there can be immediate action to that. This is about open space. This is not unique to Renton. It's not unique to any city. Every city is addressing this. What I want to thank Mark Barber for, our city attorney, is that we are way ahead of the other cities taking care of this issue. Nobody else has addressed this yet, and he was the one that said, hey, we need to be looking at this. What I appreciate is that he became probably much more familiar with everything that we deal with every day than he thought possible. But it takes all of us working together to be successful for this, and that's all of our human service agencies also. So again, unsafe, please call 911. If not, call questions. And of course, you can call just to City Hall at us anytime as we're working through this. We may make changes as we go through this policy, and I'm sure as some of these cases are challenged or other things happen in other states, we come back and review these policies and procedures as we go forward. But it's about that balance, and it's, and it's a tough one to find. So, any other questions?
Thank you, Terry, and everybody. And I want to thank the staff, because I think if the audience can see, the council could see, the compassion that all of, all of them have for everybody, but it's, but the homeless, they, it's not fun dealing with this, these situations at all. I've been on some of them, and it's not the people, it's the stuff they leave behind that is so horrible. But the compassion that you guys show for the homeless, I think, is incredible. And that goes all the way down to the park worker on the street and the police officers. We've had some examples of what they've done to try and find people help. So with that, I want to say thank you for doing a great job and a difficult job. And with that, we'll end the committee of the hall for the evening.